On behalf of the League of Women Voters in Deschutes County and the City Club of Central Oregon, welcome to the forum for candidates for Sister City Council. I'm Jim Poynter-Leeus, I'm the editor-in-chief of the Nugget Newspaper. My thank you to say thank you to the candidates who are participating. We appreciate the gravity of running for office. Candidates in this race are competing for your votes for three spots on the Sister City Council. The two candidates who win the most votes will each have a four-year term or a four-year sentence on the The third candidate, in the number of election votes, is with a two-year term. Please hold your applause and refrain from comments during the forum. And also, please take a moment and move your cell phones. Candidates will have one minute for opening remarks and 90 seconds to respond to any questions and questions that have been submitted by the public and screened by the League of Women Voters. Each candidate will have two minutes for closing remarks. We randomly selected the order of candidates for the opening statements and questions. No, they were not drawn out of a hat, but they were randomly selected. The order will be continuously rotated. We'll begin with candidates opening statements, one minute for each candidate, starting in Sherrill Hall. We will then move to the candidates' questions. So Cheryl, you are honored for opening remarks.
Thank you, Jim. All right, is this working? I've got a pretty good stage voice, so it doesn't sound like you probably still hear me. Hello, I'm Cheryl Calhoun. I decided to run for city council because I'm committed to serving our special community. My background is software development and IT project management. I feel this experience allows me to bring the skills of collaboration and logical thinking and leadership to the role of city councillor. I currently serve on the city's budget committee and urban forestry board and completed the city civic leadership academy. I've been volunteering for Habitat for Humanity for three years now to drive, work on this affordable housing issue we have, and this past year serving on their board of directors. I follow city meetings and stay informed on important topics, including the urban growth boundary, net amendment, the houseless, the infrastructure improvements and code changes. I'm prepared to hit the ground running if elected to ensure council continuity. I appreciate your consideration when voting for city council. Thank you.
Is this going in order?
Uh, yes, you were next.
Well, first off, thank you to the League of Women Voters and to the City Club of Bend for hosting us and to Jim for moderating. My name is Eli McGron and I'm running for Sister City Council. I'm a parent of an elementary school child, small business owner, a volunteer, a coach, and a chair of the Sisters Parks Advisory Board. I'm deeply invested in the future of our town. I bring an educated, yet fresh perspective representing the working families of our community who wants Sisters thrive while maintaining its unique charm. I have 25 years of experience in strategy, community building, and leadership roles, including my time helping run downtown Boulder, Colorado, and stretching all the way back in my days on student council in college. I understand the importance of thoughtful planning and creative solutions. I believe in smart growth that balances economic opportunities with preserving the livability of our beautiful small town. And I'm committed to being a voice for all residents and ensuring Sisters remains a vibrant, inclusive place for future generations. So I'm excited to serve your community and I hope they're in your support. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joshua Smith. I want to first also thank the Fire Hall for hosting this tonight. Jim, thank you for being here tonight to moderate for us, and especially Susan and the League of Women Voters for putting this all together. It's really important that you guys are noticed, heard, and recognized for all the hard work you guys put in to make this happen. And I do see a lot of familiar faces out there, so thank you all for coming out tonight. For those of you who aren't familiar with me, a little bit of my background. Many things, but first and foremost, I'm a husband of 16 years, a father of two children that go to our public schools, a fourth grader and eighth grader, and I'm deeply invested in their future. I, some of you may know me as the paper place guy, the card guy, right? Others may know me from attending our business association functions, so shout out there. A lot of others, parents know me and kids in the community know me as Coach Josh. I coach youth athletics year-round here through Sisters Little League, the board of directors, as well as going to SDRD every time.
Hi, everybody. My name is Sarah McDougall and I've been here at Sisters for four years after 14 in Bend. And when I moved here, we were just starting the pandemic and had no idea what was going on. And so it took a while to meet people, but from the beginning, it was very easy to get connected. I see someone out here who got me connected from the get-go and I really appreciate that. And as you know, once you meet somebody, they're going to connect to the next person, to the next person, and suddenly you're on board committees and learn how that happened. Currently, I serve on the planning commission and as the board chair for Citizens for Community. I love this town, but I've seen a lot of change even in the four years since I've been here. And it's going to take a lot of deliberate actions to keep our community close as Sisters continues to evolve, and I'm ready to put in the work.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Lutz. I'm currently a city councillor and am currently running right now. And I've been serving, this is the end of my four-year term. I was a Bend Sisters five years and family did move to Deschutes County over 40 years ago, so I was run very deep in this area. I am a small business owner with my husband. We do wildland fire mitigation here and based out of Sisters. Yeah, I'm a parent of a child at the elementary school. And I also just spend a lot of time doing council work. Lots of committees there too.
Grand time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, our first question will go to Eli. What makes you qualified for this position and what motivated you to run for this position?
Sure, I'm qualified because I've spent the last four years on a city board and learning how the city works. It's been a real eye-opener to see, you know, sometimes how slowly things work, but how invested the small but mighty town and their employees are. And they work really hard and I want to continue to help them do that and guide them. I think we have a great staff at the council that set them up successfully and I want to see them grow. I'm running because I think the council needs some younger members on it and people who are invested in the community, who have kids in the school district and have business owners who have sort of that viewpoint and look for people to get involved and help grow the city while maintaining its charm.
Josh is next. What makes you qualified for this position and what motivated you to run?
Thank you, Jennifer. Yeah, so it motivated me, my kids motivated me to run because I want more for them. I see, I've been here for about three years now with my business and just seeing how the town has grown, what more we can do for the kids. I've got a lot of ideas for the parks department, things that we can do ultimately there, as well as being a small business owner. The small business owner aspect, I, this year, in January, started the Sisters Business Association to collaborate with other businesses, educate, form, and all of that experience. By learning what they need, I want to be part of the city council.
And Sarah's next. Do you have a question, Sarah?
Uh, 90 seconds.
90 seconds, yes.
What makes me qualified? Well, I've been a leader since I was in high school. It's just something I got into because often there weren't people to step up and I just started stepping up and I've been stepping up ever since. In my career, I did a lot of analysis, I'm collaborative, and solved very large problems with other people. What motivated me, I actually wasn't planning to run again and C4C, Sisters for Community, had our housing forum in the spring and I had conversations with people after that that felt like their voices weren't being heard. And it just made me feel like that shouldn't happen. And so I sat down and had coffee with them, took away what they were wanting to have heard. And since then, I've had conversations with several people in our community to figure out how I can move forward with their ideas.
Well, I am qualified because I am on council. And as part of that work, I'm a board member of Economic Development with Central Oregon, for our city, represent us, the chair of the Deschutes County Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, UGV, Urban Girls Boundary Steering Committee, and other tasks that we all separate, divide and conquer on council to reach out to more community organizations. And why am I running again? And, you know, it's that motion of unfinished business. I think we're all familiar with government. It does not move at the speed that we wish it would, us included. And, you know, lots of projects, whether urban growth boundary process in the works, a lot of housing projects we're working on, getting some really big traction on. I want to see those through and also wildfire mitigation, keep our community safe.
Okay, Cheryl. Microphone's coming your way.
So what makes me qualified? When I look at some of the issues that our city faces, some of the decisions that they have to make, there's a lot to consider around that, not just what we feel as individual citizens, but also what the laws allow us to do and what is right really for our city overall. In my experience in working with large software teams, you've got a lot of geeks and you try to manage them all, it's not easy. I just tell you. But what I found as a leader was that everybody learns differently, everybody communicates differently, and everybody has a specific talent and skill. And as a councillor, I would see that as being something really valuable as a councillor, seeing people as individuals, listening to what they have to say, listening to why they believe and the things that they really strongly believe in, and then taking that and trying to represent that with the decisions that are made on city council. What motivated me to run? Honestly, I have to say the shelter application last fall when I saw what our city was going to have to do and how to manage, obviously, a very divided, important decision amongst our citizens. And I became very interested in that process. I was impressed with city staff and how they work hard and try to get communication out there and make time for people to come and voice how they felt. Thank you.
Okay, so second question goes to Josh. Does Sisters, speaking of the emergency shelter, does Sisters need a permanent or an emergency shelter for the unhoused where it is too hot, cold, or smoking? Why or why not?
Yeah, no, that's a great question and it's been impressing on us for some time. We're certainly unique in our community in the way that we're not a bigger major metropolitan area like Portland where a lot of our houseless are in the forest outside of city limits. So there's a lot that goes into giving them what they need, which is the adequate resources. And we do, we need some form of housing. And one of the ideas that I came to with from the houseless meeting that we had last week was having maybe some tiny homes on a little piece of campground from the city where it could be partial workforce housing so that we could house during the summer some of the folks to bring down from other areas that want to be here during the summer and help staff a lot of poor businesses that struggle and then as a cold weather shelter during those winter months with, and they would be able to employed by some of the local businesses and have some sort of minimum payment so that there is some form of accountability for them there. And it's not, we're not enabling what we are helping in the ways that we can.
Sarah, you're next up. And the question is, does Sisters need a permanent or emergency shelter for the unhoused where it's too hot, cold, or smoky? Why or why not?
I support having a permanent emergency shelter and no emergency. I believe that when it is too hot, too cold, or too smoky, people should have a place to go and have refuge from those conditions. This isn't something that would necessarily just be used by the houseless either. Not everybody has living conditions where they don't have leaps in their houses and are subjected to the same, you know, situations as being outdoors. I also like the idea of the long-term shelter building because there are other services we can offer our community, such as laundry and showers. People who do not have permanent shelter need those services so that they can feel good about themselves and, you know, that's the best way they can, you know, on a regular basis pull themselves together to have the confidence to go and make changes in their life. Yes.
Jennifer, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you. Like Sarah had mentioned, the issues of heat, cold, and smoke bridge everyone in the community out, whether you're in the forest or even, you know, have shelter, you know, that climate change is a real thing, it's happening. And I had a discussion with somebody a couple of years ago during that heat film event and they said, well, they came on weekends, you know, the library was closed. We've got to come up with some sort of option. And they were like, well, why? Like, everybody's got air conditioning. And I'm like, not in Central Oregon. This is, this heat thing's a new thing for us and especially with the smoke. So it's certainly an issue for all of our community members. I'm a very much a root cause person and, you know, our homeless problems and tragedies are definitely a symptom of other problems. And so I like to personally focus my energy more on end solutions. And, you know, that is housing, permanent housing, that is healthcare, that's mental healthcare. And, but, you know, there are the times when, you know, we do need emergency assistance and these extreme times, but not only homeless individuals and youth, but also, you know, people in our community.
Come here, Cheryl.
I definitely support a temporary emergency shelter for all of our citizens on the same reasons that Sarah and Jennifer mentioned. Not everyone has insulation, not everybody has heat, not everybody has cool air conditioning in addition to the smoke situation. So definitely yes on the temporary. I, as I said, I'm working on Habitat for Humanity because I do believe in trying to solve this affordable housing situation that we have in front of us. I've also had a wonderful opportunity yesterday to meet with Jeremy Fields, who is our Forest Protection Officer with the US Forest Rangers Office here and liaison out to many of the folks living in our forest. I'm coordinating with him to take a tour out there. I'd like to go out there and see what's happening. I want to say that I think our city has an amazing amount of nonprofits here and I see that the city can definitely partner with them, including the Cold Weather Shelter and SCLI for everything they're doing in our forest to protect people. So yes, I definitely support a temporary emergency shelter and I was really happy to see that happen last, I think, January when it got very cold here. I do think we might want to work a little harder on getting that message out as soon as we can to people so they can take advantage of that. And that might just come with, you know, as we get more and more prepared in advance for bad weather. Thank you.
What? Yeah, I'm also open to Cold Weather Shelter. I think it's an important part of our response. I think it should be part of a comprehensive plan though that balances emergency relief with proactive housing solutions. Part of going to that houselessness event last week was realizing that there's a dozen agencies working towards this goal and they're all doing great work. However, nobody's leading the charge and people, there needs to be some sort of, you need to wrangle the cats a little bit and make sure that everybody knows what everybody else is doing so that we can get the services to the people who need it. And it was illuminating to me to find out that, you know, almost 50% of the people live in the forest and are houseless, actually prefer not to come in and be in a permanent shelter. So that means we have to support some other options and we need, you know, to work with the local organizations and regional partners so that the shelter could be part of a bigger strategy, you know, and using the connections that the community has and the partners that the community has. And I'm going to say this a lot during my time. Yeah, whereas working together with all the other partners because that's where Sisters shines and when there's 12 of them, we can be one of the leaders of those 12 to help everybody out and find a solution to not just the Cold Weather Shelter or a shelter, but houselessness in general.
Thank you, Eli. Let's stick with housing for a moment. Sarah, the question will come to you. What incentives should the city offer developers to increase workforce housing?
Wow, I got that one.
Solve all the problems now, yeah.
Yeah. So. Instead of the developers, okay. I see this is a big part of what will happen as we expand the urban growth boundary. Right now, we're kind of left in the situation where the lots that are being developed out, there are not a lot of them left in the city. But as we go into negotiations with developers who want to annex land into the city, I think we'll have a lot of room to negotiate. There are, I was just in a meeting the other day when we were talking about this and how those things work. Often we can pick a percentage and say, okay, if you're going to bring this new development in, we want to have 10, 20, 30% affordable for workforce housing as part of that new development. And I absolutely feel like those negotiations are going to have to be serious. We're going to have to figure out what is realistic because nobody's going to build here if we're not realistic. But if we don't set out to promote more affordable workforce housing, then we won't get it. So that's where I stand.
And currently, the city, over the years, I've been on council, has been working on a number of issues, projects that, you know, help spur more affordable housing. We changed some of our codes to allow more density within the community. Is this on?
Sounds acceptable.
I have one.
I can talk loud. All right, we've been working on density, you know, creating more density, changing our code, for instance, which makes land more affordable. And the city has issued a number of grants over the last few years, some of them quite significant in size, to, you know, entities like Humidity to really help partner on these housing projects. And, you know, another thing that the city can do, you know, like I said, financially. And, you know, so I would like to, in the next, if I'm re-elected, be able to research with council the opportunities to do something along the lines of a vacancy fee, which has been used in some communities in North America, which let me use a, you know, a fee, a tax, something to be determined on second homes. We have something like a 20%, vacancy rate in our community. A lot of that's based on the fact that there are lots of second homes. And, I mean, people aren't kind of participating in our community and they're kind of making our properties more expensive than they need to be. You know, we live in a world in Oregon where we have urban growth boundaries that are limited and want them to pay their fair share. Thank you.
Send it back down to Cheryl, please.
Repeat the question, Jim.
What incentives should the city offer developers to increase workforce housing?
Okay, so I definitely think there are incentives that can be provided. I know some already are, as Jennifer mentioned, the workforce housing grant was new, I think, just this year, which was awarded to Habitat for Humanity. I know that there's opportunity to maybe discount some of the SDC fees that go on with the developers. I really think it's just a matter of kind of brainstorming and seeing what we can do. I really agree in terms of the urban growth boundary amendment process that we think about during annexation, trying to make sure we reserve some of that growth for affordable housing. And the vacancy tax is interesting. I ponder on that a bit because people who do own vacant property pay property taxes. So I would want to evaluate that a little bit more. I don't want it to be a penalty for someone to own real estate, but I think we maybe could give some incentives to people who do have vacant property and talk about that. You know, is there interest in selling? Is there interest in helping our city grow and have more affordable housing? Just like we're going to have to do with the annexation process. So I think there definitely are more incentives maybe that we could look into for the city, that the city can offer our developers. I appreciate Woodlands for operating to Habitat for Humanity, humanity, 10 lots at a very good rate that allowed us to build 10 homes. So, thank you.
Okay, Eli's next.
Yeah, incentivizing developers. I think it's a good idea to, you know, as I've already mentioned, the SDC charges, you can lower those, you can incentivize those people by tax breaks and things like that. I really agree with the big lots, big home proposition. I think it should even perhaps be a city position that's made that is like a housing coordinator, perhaps the job it is to kind of help raise wheels, kind of not go after, but realize that those empty lots do represent sort of a challenge when they're empty and they need to be encouraged to develop them. So, you know, getting to those landowners and making them know what's happening in the community and how they can help the community and how they can help, you know, develop it and it's in their best interest. And I think, you know, working on the infrastructure and the things that, as we grow, making sure we have, you know, high-speed internet, all these other things that people need in their homes so that the developers have a good infrastructure to work for. And also going after, you know, grants, things like that on county, federal level as well that can help us grow effectively.
Yeah, this one really hits home for me. Where it's home is two places. The most important on an affordable housing front is, for those of you not familiar and don't have children in the schools, our school district offers some of the best of the best who want to be here at Sisters to teach our children and they end up looking online for a home and they can't afford one. So then they need to find a job. So that creates a real shortage of housing for us. And where it also hits home for me as a business owner, and I see a few other faces out there, business owners, is seasonally, what you see when you come into one of our stores is the store owner or a child or someone who's retired who's just there to be there and help out. They're, and when we get busy during the summer during some of these huge festivals, there's a lack of, there's people who want to come for the season to be able to stay and enjoy our activities and work here and don't have the ability to do so. And then I will, I'm kind of with Cheryl on this. I'm more of a capitalist. I don't think that we should penalize anyone for having a second home, but we can maybe incentivize them in ways to make it so that it does stay housed as much as humanly possible, maybe with more long-term tenants than short-term tenants. So that I think is always the best state. But I absolutely disagree that we should be penalizing people who are wanting to have a second home.
Thank you, Josh. Let's take one more question, housing-related. And the question will go to Jennifer first. Do you think Sisters needs stronger or richer housing codes relative to short-term rentals? If you could explain your age.
This is on, yep. Well, this just came before council a few weeks ago and we did vote on some changes to our short-term rental codes. So I don't know how much people know about those changes. It kind of circles back to the it, it kind of circles back to the, the comment I made earlier about, you know, a vacancy fee. And short-term rentals were coming across to us. I mean, I think it's a concern for some of us, it's also a problem for the community as a, as a concern for, you know, not only kind of, um, using a housing that could go to people that are at full-time, but also some people have some things about parties or, or, you know, not knowing who's coming and going from the building next door. And, you know, so what we did was, um, we expanded the buffer. It was, um, 250 feet before and between permits, now we expanded it to 500 feet. And also there are some, uh, neighborhoods where they are allowed. We also said that any urban growth boundary expansion, that there will not be short-term rentals allowed, um, in any old land that's promised to the city. Yeah, so we did codify that. Nothing, you know, anything could be changed, but those were the, um, the changes that we made, you know, the process was great. Also that we gave the community a survey owners.
And we are. Send it down to Cheryl.
All right, so do we need stronger or weaker housing codes for STRs? Um, yeah, so this has been a very, uh, uh, important topic this year in front of city council, and I've been following. Um, hmm. I, I have to say that I, I, I'd like to understand really what the cause of the issue is before I try to come up with solutions. And I'm not really sure that we had a problem. Um, you know, I've, I've heard opinions of both sides. Uh, but, uh, be that as it may, it, we changed the, uh, density from 250 feet to 500 feet. Um, so, so it is. I would like to just kind of monitor that. Uh, let's, you know, baseline where we were with STRs and let's see if making these recent code changes actually have a positive effect or not. Um, I, I know we can always vote again, change it if on city council. Um, I, I do want to, I do kind of have to agree with that no STRs and the UGB amendment, because the reason why we're having to amend our UGB is because we're short 250 acres of property that could be developed. And we kind of defeat the purpose there. Um, so, um, I think I, I would, in that case, agree with the fact that that decision had been, been made regarding the UGB amendment application.
Like Cheryl, you want?
Yeah, in general, um, I like stronger codes because, um, I think it's, it takes away from the character of the town. But I also want to be cognizant that there's people who make their living or a, a great deal of their living renting out their home and might put a second home next to it or stuff like that. And I, I thought that part of the, um, the housing, uh, forum that we had, uh, you know, back to C4C, put on last spring, I think it was, addressed that, and I, I learned a lot about that. And I think, you know, Cheryl's on to something. You see how it goes, you know, you can change, you can change the, the codes and that we have the tools, you know, to do that. It's one of the tools the city has, right? The, the 500 foot, the 250 foot, I don't think it's ever going to go away. I think, uh, tourists need a place to stay, you know, that not always in a hotel and things like that, so it's not going to go away. I like to monitor it. I also like to understand that, you know, um, we don't want to become a community that is entirely dependent on STRs and has a bunch of vacant places, because that directly impacts the housing crisis that we have.
Yeah, thank you, Eli. Um, I, uh, am a strong believer, uh, again, in not telling people what they can and can't do with their properties. So, that being said, I am, uh, not sure why this came up in the first place, the city council. So I don't agree that it shouldn't be maybe a UGB. Those can be changed, uh, I suppose, but at the same time, um, for those of you, I know a lot of locals here don't like to hear this, but we drive on tourism, businesses, restaurants. Um, and with a huge, um, lack of housing, uh, for lodging, I should say, uh, within the city limits, uh, it really hinders business when we hinder the short-term rentals. So, um, I would like for, I'm pro, uh, letting people do what they want with their properties um, and allow them short-term rentals to help our local businesses.
Sarah?
I also follow the most recent process and as part of the planning commission, we are exposed to the same topics or many of the same topics like this that the council sees. Um, I was in favor of most of the changes, um, you know, that I, it, I have to be convinced between the 250 and the 500 feet. I'm curious to see how that goes, but, um, again, I'm happy to look at the data. Um, one place that I was really stuck and I continue to be, uh, behind this idea, there are people who, um, do posted rentals. What that means is they actually live in the place that they're renting out. And so, if someone wants to rent a room out in their house where they live, what that's not doing is taking away housing. That's, these are people who are part of our community. They're, they're neighbors to their neighbors. The, the building is not sitting empty when it's not being rented out. So I look at that very differently during the, during the survey, um, that was done, the city surveyed current STR owners. And there, there are people who are using those, um, rentals to help afford their expensive homes here, because they couldn't afford them here otherwise. So, um, I would like to see that changed to it, but otherwise I'm, I'm pretty fine with where they are right now.
Thank you, Sarah. The next question will start with Cheryl. How can Sisters increase the number of childcare options for young children as a component of workforce support?
Can you repeat it over again?
As a, as a component of workforce support, how can Sisters increase the number of childcare options for young children?
Wow, so. I attend the, uh, C4C community builders meetings. If you don't go to those, please do. They're fantastic. I learned quite a bit from, uh, one of the owners here of a new, um, childcare center. And the question was asked of her, well, what's your enrollment? I'm thinking she's packed and has a waiting list. No, she doesn't. And the reason why is because the people who are applying for the funds that's offered through our government um, to subsidize childcare are so backlisted or have run out of the money that these parents cannot take advantage of it. They can't get their child into the childcare. And childcare is very expensive. So that was quite a shock to hear that. I don't know what we can do as city council to change that. But maybe there could be some incentives to help these, um, uh, business owners, um, to start up their business and be able to afford to run their business despite maybe not always having full enrollment. Um, whatever that could be in terms of, I don't know, business taxes, permits, what have you. Um, I was really discouraged to hear that, and I hope that we as a city can come together and work on problems like this and brainstorm. I know we have excellent city staff. I'm really impressed with all of the data and research that they do and put before the city council to make decisions. So I look forward to seeing that happen.
Thank you. Um, I think, uh, we need to work with partners to do this. Um, there are some great partners, the city right now, the Sisters Park and Rite, churches, uh, some private entities who are offering childcare. Biggest, uh, concern usually is space, finding a space, right? Um, so maybe there could be an incentive in some of the new developments to find spaces, uh, for preschools and, and childcare. Uh, I think that would be something the city could help do. Uh, what I think the city does a great job of is connecting, uh, the different entities in this community and Sisters country at large, not just in the city proper, uh, SPRD, you know, being one of those. And I think that, uh, tackling this issue is connecting the people, getting them in a room, kind of talk about it and, uh, using some of the, uh, some of the resources that we have, we make sure that, you know, the physical places that these, uh, these childcare can go are, are there and available and can fully incentivize them some other way and they come to us. But we as council, we'd be open to that and we can start that, uh, uh, communication as soon as we're likely. See.
Yeah, so, uh, I have, so I have two children that are grown now. They're actually sitting back there. Um, and we've been really close, uh, through, uh, some daycare, uh, small business owners and one of the, the big issues is all the red tape that it takes to run a childcare. Um, and, uh, all of the, the backend things that need to happen to make them successful. Um, not just, I mean, from the continuing education to, uh, all of the the, uh, red tape that they have to go through step by step, uh, things that have to happen. Um, and so I think there, uh, can be some incentives there, um, as well as I think Eli is on to something where it's going to take a group effort. Um, uh, all of us getting together to find a solution. For me, this one's a little bit like the housing situation. It's not a one-size-fits-all, right? Um, so getting the partners together and really working through a solution. Uh, but I am also excited, um, with SPRD, uh, taking over the old elementary school, as you may know, but they have, uh, listened to the public and one of the big things that they did, uh, make a, a, um, anything, a pool, anything out there, right, that they dedicated a majority of that space to, uh, daycare preschool. So, um, I'm really excited for the city to see that through with Parks and Rite Department.
This is a huge issue, um, but I don't want to sound a feeist, but I'm not sure this is a city issue to solve. Um, I, I do sit in on the vision implementation team here in Sisters as part of, uh, my role at City and Conspur community. Um, there have been committees as part of that organization who have looked at the issue. Um, the, the person who did start the childcare in the, uh, old elementary school, um, I applaud her for trying to pay her people well and give them benefits. Um, but it's expensive. It's expensive to run childcare. Um, you know, Cheryl mentioned, um, funding that's not available from the federal government and, um, I don't think that's something the city can come behind and fix. I'm not saying we couldn't, you know, make contact, see if there's things we can do, but I'm not sure there's going to be any kind of city code or funding that's going to be able to change that. I, um, this is really difficult and we do have partners working together already on this. Um, right now I'm just not seeing an answer where the city is going to be able to increase the affordability, affordability of childcare options.
Along with Sarah, I do sit on the, uh, vision, vision implementation team, uh, for the Sisters Country Vision as well. And, you know, a year or two ago, we made that a priority to work on daycare, because of a social and acute need in the community. And what came out of that process, uh, were, were a few things. Uh, one is that we kind of highlighted the great need for it and having a lot of, um, players in the room at that table. You know, we all kind of leaned in on what we could do. And, uh, it's, it is because now, you know, the school district being a partner and allowing a daycare to operate, uh, at the old elementary school, they still own that building. Um, you know, that was a quick success of, of all of us leaning in together, uh, the city included. Uh, you know, we, the city pays for a, uh, a person with economic development for Central Oregon. Um, who's in the backyard. And, and even though it's not really in the job description, he jumped in with both feet because his employers desperately need childcare for their, their workers, you know, so we've been on that as well. Um, you know, we do have some opportunities, uh, that we still need to flesh out. Uh, one is we do have conversations ongoing for service. They do have, uh, the ability to operate a daycare on their property. 50% of the children are for-service employee children. The other 50% can be community members. So we're still kind of exploring that. And also I would like to see multi-family, uh, so many, any multi-family buildings over certain units to opt for like space legal for daycare.
That's very hot. Second question for, uh, the next question will go to Eli. How are we doing on time? We have one more or two? Okay, so the next question is for Eli. Um, and this sort of falls on, on, uh, you should, as Sarah raised, what do you consider are the rules and responsibilities of city council?
Yeah, mostly it's the set policy and, uh, you know, set the rules for the city, uh, and be a guiding force and to participate, as Jen mentioned, in the wider community of Central Oregon and Oregon in general. Um, so that's the main thing. I think we have a stellar staff here. Many, many people who do a great job and city council's job sometimes is to just support them, listen to them, make sure that they are giving us, uh, the right information, that we can hopefully make the best decision to move the city forward. Um, you know, uh, and then, you know, being on those other boards and committees like Jen mentioned that are throughout the whole, uh, wider community is a big deal, because, uh, Sisters is known for, you know, its leadership and it's known for its strong voices. And I think, uh, we need to continue that. So, yeah, that answered the question.
Josh?
Yeah, I think the number one priority, uh, is to listen and to advocate for all of its citizens to be there. Uh, as, as a small business owner in retail, I have people coming in day in and day out. Uh, they tell me about what's going great, what's not going so great. Um, and I feel like the city council's number one priority should always be the people, the people that voted you in. Um, and then at, once you're there, being able to make those tough decisions. I have a lot of experience being a small business owner, having to make those tough decisions. Some of you know, I tried to expand my business and go out a little bit. I had to make that tough economic decision to cut back, right? None of these things are easy. Um, but they do, uh, they, these decisions need to be made, um, and I'm, I'm a guy for the job.
Thanks, Stephanie. Um, Josh mentioned, uh, listening to the community. That is absolutely a, uh, number one responsibility. But with that, we also have to look at what it takes to just exist. You know, we need water, we need our waste to go somewhere. So we need to be looking at what does it take just to be here and, and get through the day-to-day. Um, so the city council, and sorry that I have to go before Jennifer here, but the city council has, um, goals that they put together every year, and I feel like that's really the driving force of what happens during the year. Um, those goals go across all the topics and then there's sub-goals within each of the areas. Um, that's how the staff knows what to move forward and that's part of city council's goal or responsibility is to set the tone for the, the staff of the city and especially the city manager who manages the rest of the staff. Um, as was mentioned before, it's, we're there to make hard decisions, we're there to not always agree with everybody, but to listen carefully when they speak. And, um, we are out in the community, the greater community, representing Sisters on other, um, other committees and, uh, organizations.
And so as a city councillor, uh, you know, like everybody before, I know you create points. Um, policy is obviously one of the top things that we do and sometimes surprise them like changing codes and, you know, to, to keep up with, um, you know, changes in the world or the laws that have changed around us. Uh, you know, we hire and hopefully not fire a city manager. Uh, that was a big lift that we had a couple of years ago. I hope that nobody here has to, to deal with that again. I hope he stays. I think we found a great, uh, city manager, um, for our community. Um, you know, obviously with the conduit, uh, from the voters that are community members, you know, through the council to that city manager, um, you know, ex- expressing what the community needs and wants. Um, we need to be able with our, our goals, we have a work plan, get those things done every year. Um, you know, and the other, uh, thing that we do is, uh, I think it's a very big responsibility is that we have to care. And this is an unpaid position and it requires a lot of hours and a lot of work. And, you know, sometimes people look at council and you, you, you get to a meeting quick, you vote on something pretty quickly and they're like, well, you didn't discuss that. And I say, yeah, because we put in hours of reading and meetings beforehand, um, to make that happen. Uh, so nobody has to sit through a seven-hour meeting. So, um, but, but yeah, those, those are kind of the, the top issues. All right, thank you.
All right, so we've already heard policymaking, definitely. Uh, that's a, a major responsibility of city council. I think it's important too, for I think it's important too for a city council to, uh, make sure they don't get in the way of city staff. Uh, we've, uh, city council hires a city manager. They have faith in that manager. They have trust in that manager. And that manager manages the staff. Um, uh, we don't want a city council that is, uh, bypassing the manager, getting into, down to the staff level, directly working with staff or anything like that. We need to trust our city manager. So we want to make sure there's a separation of duties there. I think that's really important for a city councillor to remember. Um, we want to be, make sure we're putting our citizens first and then we're following our laws. Um, I, um, also see setting the goals as being key. Obviously we have a, a budget that has to have some goals. It needs to understand where it's going and what money we need, and that would be based on the city goals that are, uh, established. Um, and as far as time, um, I asked several, uh, past councillors, current councillors. So how much time does it really take to be a city councillor? And I have to tell you, the numbers, um, are pretty darn high, up to thirty hours a week. If you really want to be an effective councillor, it is a full-time job. I'm willing to do that. I'm committed to doing that and I have the time to do that.
Thank you, Cheryl. So I am told that we are out of time for questions. Uh, we got to, to six questions and there aren't more, but, uh, they have to, it will have to be put by the board. We're now going to move into closing remarks. You each have two minutes to, uh, to make your case to the voters and we'll start with Eli.
Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to share my vision for Sisters tonight. A long-term resident, Oregon, a small business owner and a parent of a child. Here at the elementary school, I'm committed to make sure our town thrives while preserving the qualities that make it so special. Here are issues that I would like to focus on as your city council member. First, affordable housing, which we've been over a lot, is essential, ensuring that families, workers and retirees can continue to call Sisters home. I'd love to see a half-time or full-time position created at the city, like an affordable housing coordinator that could work to make sure the emplots are developed in a timely manner, that current and future resources are communicated to the population effectively and that our development partners have what they need to be successful. Um, I want to create sustainable housing options that align with the character of the town so we don't lose our sense of community. Second, smart growth is critical. We need a plan for development that boosts our economy without sacrificing the natural beauty in the small-town feel that drew us all here. Uh, that includes thoughtful infrastructure improvements, long-term planning that considers both, uh, current and the future residents. Third, wildfire preparedness, urgent issue for all of us. Uh, I'll prioritize safety measures, including prevention and emergency response strategies to protect our homes and our natural surroundings. And tourism is a major driver for economic activity here in Sisters, but it needs to be balanced with, uh, livability of the town for its residents. So I want to help manage tourism in a way that supports the local businesses while ensuring that it doesn't put the wrong on resources. And finally, as someone who brings a younger working perspective to council, I believe in being a voice to our residents. I'm committed to listening, problem-solving, fostering communities and connections and making decisions that benefit everyone, from families, retirees, and small businesses to our future generations. So I'm honored to have the opportunity and I ask for your vote on the number three.
Yeah, so I want to thank you all for being here, uh, showing that you really care about what happens going forward in our community. Um, I want to let you guys know that most importantly, uh, there are a lot of things that we will focus on in city council. Uh, I know that affordable housing is a huge topic that we'll continue to work, work through. Again, the smart growth, uh, along with Eli here on tourism, um, I just see it in a different light, uh, which is why I've been, I co-founded the Sisters Business Association, uh, to be able to find solutions. We've actually set up, uh, meetings with ECO, uh, Explore Sisters, uh, and the Chamber of Commerce to try and figure out, uh, what more we can do to bring tourism to our town. As you know, uh, between inflation, some of those other things, it's actually been a lighter here for a lot of our businesses. So we also all look for your support. Uh, most importantly, I'm going to be an advocate. Uh, I'm going to be an advocate for my kids, for the youth in our community. I'm going to be, uh, an advocate for our small businesses. Um, and I promise you that I will do everything I can to listen and take care of you. Uh, and I will be an advocate for the houseless in our community. Um, and most importantly, I'm going to be an advocate for every single one of my neighbors here in Sisters, uh, because we have such a beautiful type community and I want to be able to keep it that way. So thank you. Please vote for me.
Two years ago, I ran for a city council seat and did not win. Since then, I've spent eighteen months on the planning commission, learning about development code and land use laws. Additionally, as part of the commission, I have learned about and includes key city topics such as dark skies, short-term rentals and the current urban growth boundary process. I've also spent the last eighteen months as board president for Citizens for Community, a local nonprofit that builds community on the foundations of civility, collaboration and civic, civic engagement. It's been a time of great change for this organization. Working on these two teams, especially through difficult topics, has meant a lot of my time invested in meetings, research, one-on-one conversations and learning in general. It has also brought me to understand some of the formal and informal networks in our community. The level of collaboration on our local level is high. As I gathered information for the voter pamphlet, I was honored to be endorsed by several planning commissioners and C four C team members, including some who I have voted differently than and differed in my perspectives on. I consider that to be a sign that I'm a good team member, one who does the appropriate work and comes prepared to have open discussion. My peers see me as someone who is qualified to serve on council and I hope you do too.
Well, I want to do my thank yous now. I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Uh, there's, you know, a few other more fun things to do in town, but, uh, I really appreciate it. I mean, it's definitely a sign of Sisters Country of, of, uh, participation, um, in this community, which I'm always in awe of. I want to thank the League of Women Voters for, and City Club of Central Oregon for putting this event together as well. Uh, these are the, two of the organizations that are trying our darkest to, to, um, foster democracy and I really appreciate that. And, and also just want to remember what Jim said earlier, want to reiterate, you do get to vote with three people. Um, this is kind of like a fantasy football type of voting here. It's a, you know, you, you know, most communities, you vote, you run for a seat and you kind of run two or three people per month seat. Here you get to pick your team, you know, you can go, oh, let these two people seem to work all together. Let's vote for two of them. So just remember, this is, this is the odd one. You can vote with three. And then the, the other city thing was, we do have committee openings now, um, look at the city websites. Uh, so if you're interested in participating around these committees we talk about, uh, please visit the website, um. You know, a lot, a lot of these committees, you don't even have to live in the city to participate in. Uh, so what I want to say is that I've really enjoyed my last four years here on city council. It's been incredibly rewarding. I've got to work with just some amazing people. I love my fellow councillors. Um, you know, we don't all see things the same. We don't all vote the same and that's what makes us just so fantastic. Uh, we get together, we talk about our ideas, uh, civilly and, uh, look forward from there. And it's been a really great experience and I hope to really continue that, um, you know, with a new slate of, uh, of, of the councillors. And I really just want to keep working on, uh, these kind of three big issues, affordable housing. Uh, the urban growth boundary expansion, want to kind of see that through. We're so close to getting that done. And then wildfire prevention, uh, to keep everybody in and around our community safe.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters, City Club and Jim Cornelius for this opportunity. And thanks for everyone here, uh, for attending and listening. Years ago, uh, my husband and I left a city of three million people, selling almost everything and taking only what would fit in our RV. Uh, don't worry, our marriage survived. We were searching for small-town America, for a place with rich history, culture, community events, friendly people and beauty. And we found that here in Sisters and are proud to now call it home. I believe policies for large cities like the one we left may not work for the small-town of Sisters. I will be diligent in policymaking decisions and focus on what is best for our city overall, putting the laws and our citizens first. I will strive to be a councillor, to maintain, as a councillor, to maintain a strong connection with residents who need to know their voices are recognized and valued in the decision-making process. Change is inevitable, but proper planning and managed growth can help keep our city special. I believe as we plan for the future, that our city's vision plan of a resilient, prosperous, livable, connected Sisters should remain our guiding light. Thank you. I appreciate your consideration for a vote.
Thank you. This is your opportunity to say thank you to all the towns. Your voice, vote is your voice and the last day to update your vote registration is October fifteenth. Uh, ballots will be mailed on October sixteen, which means we should be seeing them next week. Uh, we recommend using ballot box nearest you. There is a ballot, uh, ballot drop box at city hall. Um, if you're mailing your ballot, assure that it's postmarked no later than election day, November fifth, to have your votes counted. Um, for more information about the twenty twenty four candidates or measures, that, visit vote four one one dot org. Uh, there's video recording of this event. Thank you, Susan Cobb. It will be on YouTube, on the, uh, League Women Voters, the shoots, uh, or website. That's L W B the shoots, uh, or, and, uh, that'll be up within twenty-four hours. So thanks, everybody, for participating.
Thank you, Jim.